Could you join us with pledge of allegiance? Pledge of allegiance.
To the United States of America. To the republic which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. Rule call, please.
Trustee Blower?
Yes.
Trustee McGurran?
Yes.
Trustee Young?
Yes, ma'am. Public participation, individuals who wish to address the board must speak from the podium and state their name and address for the record. Points should be made clearly and precisely within a five-minute time period. One person's time may not be yielded to another. Comments should be directed to the board with courtesy and respect. Any responses from the board will be of like kind. So Jerry Hilbert?
Evening, young man. My name is Jerry Hilbert. Live at 3663 Leahy Road. I want to say, Julie, I like the article that's in the cornerstone about the police levy, I mean, fire levy. Like, that is informative. Already, I read it several times and looking how far the two levies have come. Saying it's not time. Saying it's time to really look down because if what the county says, Butler County, 2025, everybody's taxes in this room is going to probably jump about 34%.
From what?
From we paid our taxes this year is the first half of '24.
Right.
What part of cash, let's put it this way, what is the next year's taxes going to be?
I don't know how you would know because the tax, I mean, the values, there's no valuation on the books.
No, I understand that. But what they were saying, what I'm hearing and stuff is about that height. That's where the next thing is going to be to look at. Where that's at. How did you get your numbers? Let's put it that way.
Well, a couple different ways. I calculated them myself and then I requested the same data from the Butler County Auditor and they confirmed the numbers that we've been working with, so.
I asked the Butler County Auditor, the same question. Didn't get that answer.
Oh, no, they did a calculation on our behalf. You can request levy estimates, so I requested a series of levy estimates. Because I had done them myself, but I didn't want to presume that I'm, I always worried that I'm a little rusty. So I voted the source and said, hey, can you give me this data? And when they brought it back, it was the same, so.
How soon do you think we'd be talking about it?
That is up to the Board of Trustees to make that decision, but we do have a timeframe. If we're going to run it in November, everything has to be to the Board of Elections by August. So we have a series of things that has to happen. So it's on the agenda, ongoing until they make.
The last levy was 2024?
Not for fire.
Does a renewal?
Oh, that was, I apologize.
Right, but what's going to happen to, until we go for five years?
There are two different levies. There's a 3 mil and a 2.75, and the 3 mil is up. It expires after next year, which means it would have to be renewed next year. And you do have one opportunity to renew it a year earlier, but that's not what I'm, that's not what I proposed to the board. I proposed running one new levy and rescinding, if it passes, rescinding the other two immediately.
Right, I, that's how I took it.
Okay. I have not yet read the article and they did not talk to me, so when I hear that there was an article, I'm, I'm a little concerned, but I'm assuming they took things from the meeting videos, so that's my assumption.
You know what, never mind. It'll be interesting to know what it is going to be.
Correct.
And also when it's going to start for the people.
Well, hypothetically, if it were voted on in November of '25, it would begin collection in January of '26 for the '25 tax year because it's always a year behind. And the other two would go away immediately. We would take steps to do that.
I meant when we could hear it through the public.
Um, well, that's, it's an ongoing discussion for the board. I can't speak for them, but it is on the agenda going forward. I don't know if the leave, is it on a work session? No, it's, no, our March work session is earmarked, but we've got it as old business for the discussion because a decision has to be made if, we have, we have a series of resolutions that have to happen in a certain order. And in between, the auditor has to give you a certificate. So it's, June, July will be very pivotal. Let's just put it that way. And then, so they have a little bit of time to discuss the options. And I know I have a meeting tomorrow with the Fire Chief and some of his staff to talk about, they have a 10-year budget that they work on.
Already you're starting to see, I am, I say, let's put it this way. Your insurance agents, when they want to renew policies, they're increasing the deductible. And they might have different, put in inclusion, included, included, where they don't want to tell you where it's included at, what it is. So they'll take one deductible and increase it another thousand. They take other ones and go same way because of all the fires, because of all the tornadoes and all the rest. We all are in this area. We didn't get hurt, but we're going to have to pay for it.
Absolutely.
And the reason I'm asking, I live on a fixed income. I want to know what that's going to be.
As do we. We're all, we're not all in the same boat, but we're in a similar boat, so.
My boat's getting a little bit older.
I, I understand. We certainly, the reason I brought it up is because we're looking at the operating budget, if, do you care if I talk about?
Go ahead, yeah, great.
The reason I brought it up is the, the fire budget has been like at 1.1 million since we brought the second levy on, is that 2011 or 2014?
2011.
It's 2011.
2011. At that time, we were still a part-time and volunteer fire department. We were running the two houses, but it was on a part-time and volunteer basis. Now, flash forward, it's 2025 and we're operating, we're paying bills based on 2025 expenses using a 2011 budget. Not, they've been very frugal over the years, thankfully, which has allowed us get to this point. We've continued to renew these levies, meaning that 1.1 million has stayed flat. No extra money coming in. And now we're a full-time department with five full-time staff, no volunteers and all part-time. We've bought three engines, a medic unit. I mean, we've, we've done a lot with this pool of money. And I can, I can honestly say as a citizen who wasn't sitting in this seat for a long time, and now is the fiscal, I'm sorry, they've done a remarkable job up to this point.
Good, good.
But we're now, we're now looking, no, but looking at it, you know, we're having discussions with, our expenses are growing and our revenue has not. We're either going to have to ask for a renewal with an increase or to replace. There's one representative who's trying to take the replacement levy off of the table, so we might be stuck with either renewing or just adding a new one. And so it was like, is it the time to start talking about doing away with the two, running one? And we might be able to do a lower millage overall. But keep in mind, the two levies combined, that 5.75 effective rate is down to 3.28 mils. That's because we've had that much growth in value, so the rate keeps shrinking. So out of that 5.75, we're only collecting 3.28 mils to keep that 1.1 million revenue bucket at. So if we increase, even dropping it to five and a half mils, I think we gain an extra $600,000 annually in the budget. That's considerable. I mean, we, we, I'll say we, the royal we, have been very frugal in, in how we spend the money. That $600,000 annually will go a long way for personnel, for these increases in costs and our, our equipment costs. Fire, I love our fire department, but their toys are expensive. And they're not toys, it's valuable equipment. I say that cynically, but their equipment is expensive. And, you know, we're looking at, we want to continue the level of service that our citizens have come to expect. We don't want to talk about shuttering a firehouse. We don't want to talk about running them, you know, not running them both at the same time. That's not right. It's not right to one side of the township. We want to continue, and I think our citizens want us to do that too. But we're also very mindful of the property tax situation.
I mean, it ought to be interesting to see how many people in Ross Township are retired.
Oh, absolutely, I understand.
Make a little study of some of these.
Serious.
I'm one of them. One, so.
That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, oh.
We need to be looking at that.
Well, you were, you were on the Police Committee for the levy and you understood the, you understood the dilemma we were faced with. The Police Department needed extra revenue, but we were also looking at the horrific value increase and nobody knew how that was going to play out. We were very mindful of that. And I will assure you that, I will speak for them, they are very mindful of what we do. And, and so is our, our new chief, as was our prior chief. They're, they're citizens here, they, you know. So there's going to be a lot of discussions. I would encourage folks to come to the meetings to hear it firsthand because we're not hiding anything. We have to talk about.
Be it that way.
Oh, I understand that. I'm just saying, we need, the time is, the good news is, we have, we can run it this November. If, if things don't go the way we hope, we have next year to figure out what it is we have to do. So we're being really proactive instead of reactionary. Like, oh, we have to pass it this November or we don't have a fire. No, no. We're going to run it, hopefully, run it and be successful and get it down to one. The other problem is, we always seem to be running a levy of some sort and people get tired of that. They, they say, I thought we just passed one. Well, that was police, or that was the other fire, or that was. So we would like to get it simplified.
It was a good article, but you had to really read it several times.
Well, I'm anxious to read it. Since I'm being quoted, I'm anxious to read it.
We need to work on a, so it's sellable to the residents.
Absolutely.
Jerry, can I talk to you?
All right, as she was saying, we want to take it down to one. And we're trying to be, like she said, too, a proactive, not a reactive, because reactive's way too late. You realize we have some problems coming up in the future with the new evaluations and everything, the money that it'll generate, like she said, there'll be just one levy then instead of two. And so that'll generate a lot of money, it'll hold us over for a lot of years, so we won't be coming back for quite a while, hopefully, hopefully. It all depends on the growth. We have five farmhands full-time. I'd like to see it increased by at least two because that's not a whole lot of guys considering how much we have to take care of. Then we got quite a few part-time. So we want to run this levy. If we don't get it passed, like she said, we have until next year. But if we don't get that, you know, either one of them passes, then we go for maybe a whole year without any, any income coming in, that would be devastating to the township. So we're trying to think ahead, what we're going to do. And I'll throw it in there as well, we're thinking, I'm thinking the same way for the fire department, Police Department, I'm sorry. So we won't have two levies always showing up. There again, we'll go back to one levy. So we're trying to see what the township's going to be doing, how we're going to be growing and do something about it now. And it's going to take time to educate the public, that's the hard part, because they'll have them right away, oh, thank, something's, oh, what are you hiding? We're not hiding nothing.
Well, that's what I'm trying to say. You need to be looking at, maybe, what's the age group? What is the number, number of people here? And look at what it's going to cost. You need that handle of what it's going to really cost.
And we're trying to keep everything down to minimal, but like she said, the money that it'll generate will be so helpful for the township, the fire department as well, if we do something like that for the Police Department as well.
Yeah.
All right, you understand?
Let me make one, one other point to everybody who's concerned about this. Ohio is one of the only states that doesn't collect revenue on increased value yearly. So all of this revaluation that's been going on, that goes on yearly in Illinois or Kentucky or, you know, whatever state does that, and they allow that difference. So you are automatically, I don't want to say taxed, but you're taxed without knowing you're being taxed, it's just part of the way that the state operates. Our governor, I don't remember which one of them, said they're not going to do that. You can't add tax to the, the people's property tax without the vote of what we're doing right now. So all that valuation that has happened from 2011 to 2024, or '25, we haven't, we haven't got, because Ohio doesn't do that, because the governor, the, the House and the Senate thought that's not fair, that that's not fair to tax the people that way. So we're operating within that constraint. One of the other things that bothered me with the way that the police levy was, the Police Department was run, was it was on a renewable levy, which means it had to be renewed every, every time, otherwise it goes away. The fire department's the same way, they're on a renewable levy. So if it, if it, if one of the levies doesn't renew, then we got problems. We need to fix that too. It needs to be on a continuing levy so that there is some type of a minimum for the department to at least say, okay, we've got this. If they don't renew the next levy, we're going to operate within our means, we're not going to deficit spend, we're not doing that. But we at least have a department and, and we have this. So that's the thrust of this levy. The Police Department has its own levy, but that is how they are done. They are on a continuing levy.
Looking at it at that time.
That's right. Yeah.
Long time says, make it affordable for the people.
Yeah.
And look at what you got and make it explainable.
Right.
That's our goal.
Very well.
Thank you.
At least we're on the same page.
Is your, you need to be me?
No, you're not me, you asked great questions, Jerry. Thank you, letting me speak.
Go to collections. Move for the adoption of motion 25-024, to dispense with the reading of the minutes from the February 6, 2025, regular meeting, and the February 18, 2025 work session. I need a second.
Second.
Motion, any discussion? All right, rule call.
Trustee McGurran?
Yes.
Trustee Blower?
Yes.
Trustee Young?
Yes, ma'am. Move for the adoption of motion 25-025, to approve the minutes from February 6, 2025, regular meeting. I need a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Rule call.
Trustee McGurran?
Yes.
Trustee Blower?
Yes.
Trustee Young?
Yes. Move for the adoption of motion 25-026, to approve the minutes from the February 18, 2025 work session. I need a second.
Second.
Discussion? Rule call.
Trustee McGurran?
Yes.
Trustee Blower?
Yes.
Trustee Young?
Yes, ma'am. Presentation to the American Legion, Derwin Schultz?
Post.
A post, 138 Hamilton, Ohio.
Thank you, Mr. President. Real quick, just for everybody out there, I appreciate you coming tonight. This has been quite a task in the making, but I'm very fortunate to have worked with Nancy Havercamp and the Matt Havercamp Foundation, which if you don't know, a year-to-date is one of the greatest foundations ever created for law enforcement. They've donated over 115 police K-9 units to local law enforcement to the tune of $1.2 million. And earlier, a couple of months, a month or two ago, I reached out, it was one of my goals to bring our first-ever K-9 unit here to the township. Prior where I worked, I had two K-9 units that did some amazing jobs and really helped keep our community safe. So I started partnering with Nancy, sending her lots and lots of emails. I think she blocked me a couple of times, but that's all right. But was able to go out and start soliciting funds and I went and spoke with Commander Callahan and the members here of the American Legion for the Hamilton 138 post and told them what I desired to do to keep this township safe and to keep dangerous drugs off of our streets, from killing our citizens and as a deterrent to tell people, if you commit crimes in this township, I will now have a K-9 that will get a lot of attention to you. So I just said it a little bit different way behind closed doors, but for public, I'll say it that way. But I was absolutely floored when they called me that night after I spoke and donated $16,000 to the Matt Havercamp Foundation to bring us our first-ever police K-9. And so that's a round of applause. So we are working with Havercamp Foundation. We also had the Ross Lions Club made a donation to us. Mr. Watson made a donation. Mr. Tennis with Sipsey Klein made a donation to us. I mean, I bought a house from him, so I kind of forced him to do that. But it's so refreshing to see a community get behind their law enforcement and for us to bring this, because this will be a game changer for our organization in keeping our streets safe. So we will be going, I won't be going because I'm too old for a K-9, but Sergeant Little over there, he will be our K-9 officer and he will be going to Shallow Creek Kennels up in Pennsylvania, starting in June, where he will be frustrated daily in the heat as the dog tells him what to do. He tries to coordinate that. So I'm very appreciative. We have a plaque here, we're going to do a quick presentation, take some photographs. But again, I cannot thank Nancy Havercamp and the Board of the Trustees for allowing us this opportunity and for, for the American Legion, I just absolutely am blessed and thank you for your trust that we will make this something that will help keep our community safe. So without that, we can get a big check and take some pictures, right? Let's do it, come on. Everybody can come up here real quick. Yeah, 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 I've already sent your picture to him to watch out for this guy. Yeah, so we'll come up here, Nancy. Yeah, we'll come up. Well, that's a. What's he hiding there? This guy went on every speech with me and he was like, this guy never stops talking. Where's my, where the trustees come on up here, please? And without you approving this, I couldn't have done it. Come up here.
Double stack.
Yes, get up here. Did you say tallest being front, is that what you said? No, no. You want to hold that, this is the check.
All right, just not trying to, Nancy's face would be swell. David, if you could drop your arm just a hair so we could see her pretty face. Thank you. All right, let's do it this way. First one, two, three, smile. All right, looks good. Thank you very much.
Couple adjustments?
Yep.
You got it? Good? Awesome, thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you so much. You're welcome. Been seeing you since last.
All right, gentlemen, take your time. The board welcome.
That was impressive.
Can I get one? Yeah? Do I get one more with this?
There's a handwriting on that check.
No, that's amazing.
That's our printing.
Yeah, keep cuddling up. David, you need to, yes, swing this one to him.
Blower?
Yes.
Come on, please.
Tuck in, tuck in. Tuck in a little closer to Russ.
Tell it to.
Okay, there you go. I want to try to not get the table. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
That was party.
Good enough. That K-9.
Yeah. Can send your pictures and everything.
Okay.
Five minutes into him speaking, we are in the side, yes.
Care of our community.
I appreciate it, guys.
We appreciate it, and we're going to take off though unless you guys. Thank you.
Then we're going to have to.
We're going to do pictures for.
We need a ramp.
Break the chairs.
Three minutes.
Do it one more time.
Yeah.
Six miles from here, not far, up 128 east.
Have an introduce yourself.
You just figured well.
I can bring my dad, he took that too, man. He's, he's about 25.
Boy, the man. Bring him down.
He's still very excited though.
Bring him down. Good.
Thank you very much.
Our address, our hours on the back.
Two more, two more. Where's Sprague? Sprague? You want her to pin it on? You want her to pin it on? Badge. She can stab you with it, that's what I'm saying. I think she, just let her do it, whenever you want to.
You got a damnation, right? He's got a sense of humor. He's got his badge on already.
Do you want me to read real quick stuff? Okay, we're going to, we're going to move on to the next presentation that I have. We're going to swear in two of our newest officers today. They've actually been working, but this will be their official ceremony. So first up will be Detective Don Minnick. Both these gentlemen, I'm going to tell you, it took me like two months to court to get them to come out here and work and convince them that they were going to have a great time. So Mr. Minnick, they're not, it's okay. Mr. Minnick, I knew Mr. Minnick from Hamilton County. He was a detective for several years down, I'm going to, I'm going to gloat about both of you, so just get over it right now. So he, he was assigned for a number of years to the FBI's Violent Crimes ICAC Task Force down in Cincinnati and was the expert to go to when it came to crimes against children and violent crimes that were going on. He helped me solve a lot of cases. I heard, I found out he was a resident out here and I was like, are you kidding me right now? What is he doing? Is he retired? Because I knew he left the sheriff's office. So he still works for the Park District down in Hamilton County, but I was able to convince him that working along Mr. Sprague would be fantastic. So these two came out here and I'm really, really excited. This is some leadership and experience that as a young department that we have right now, they're going to give top-notch service to our citizens and I, I'm very thankful that they both came on. So I'll let Mr. Young do the first thing.
Right, raise your right hand, sir. I, Don Minnick.
I, Don Minnick.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do you solemnly swear?
To uphold the Constitution and laws of the United States of America.
To uphold the Constitution and law of the United States of America.
To laws and Constitution of the state of Ohio.
Law and Constitution of the state of Ohio.
And the laws and ordinance of Ross Township, Ohio.
And the laws and ordinance of Ross Township, Ohio.
And I would discharge the duties of the Office of Police Detective to which I have been appointed.
I will discharge the duties of the Office of Police Detective to which I've been appointed.
To the best of your ability.
To the best of my ability.
I imagine you will, sir. I appreciate it. I do. You've got to get pinned.
It's going to be our first crime scene, let's go.
This is the master.
Do it.
You're a witness to it.
Oh, thank you.
Minnick's family, come on up.
You guys can come up.
Gentlemen, trustees, would you guys like to come up for a picture, please? Thank you. I'm going to hug you, buddy. Just for when this gets bad.
You want to get their family first?
No, we'll get them all, then we'll get your family.
Remember when you hugged? Look at me now. One drunk night.
One drunk night is not.
That water bottle, it's still.
I didn't.
Thank you.
He's just put it there.
It's his fault.
It is. Alrighty, thank you.
Thank you. Your family, you guys want to take a picture of them?
They sound like you like each other.
Got us on a good day.
There we go.
Thank you very much.
Our next one is Officer Jeff Sprague. So Sprague comes from the city of Fairfield where he worked for 25 years. 20 years of that, he was a supervisor, working the road and also in investigations. P.O. Sprague and I have worked a lot of cases that would go over Hamilton County and Butler County. So he wanted to keep working for Blue Ash when he retired. And so I said, why do you want to go to Blue Ash? I just left. I'm here now. Come on up to Ross Township. So we had a lot of conversations, but he brings one of, one of the best investigators I've ever worked with on a case in, in my careers. Really, for Butler County, whenever I had to come up here, he knew how to do it. He knew how to get things done. And he, he, I keep telling him he's going to be moving into some supervisory role. And he's like, don't you do that to me. I just want to have fun again, being out here on the road. So he's going to be out there with, again, Detective Minnick and our, a lot of new hires. We have some recruits in the academy right now that will be graduating in June. And he's going to be out there giving them guidance, keeping them safe, making sure they're doing right for the township and really giving some great leadership out there. So I can't, I'm so excited that I tricked him into coming out here. But yeah, so, so Mr. Young, he's all yours.
All right, I, raise your right hand. I, Jeff Sprague, do solemnly swear.
I, Jeff Sprague, do solemnly swear.
To uphold the Constitution and laws of the state, yes, States of America.
To uphold the laws and Constitution of the United States of America.
The laws and Constitution of the state of Ohio.
The laws and Constitution of the state of Ohio.
And the laws and ordinance of the Ross Township, Ohio.
And the laws and ordinances of Ross Township, Ohio.
And I will discharge the duties of Office Police Officer to which I have been appointed.
And I will discharge the duties to the Office of Police Officer to which I have been appointed.
To the best of your ability.
To the best of my ability.
And I'm quite sure you can.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I appreciate it.
Need a penny. I'm going to stick it.
Sorry, honey. I didn't mean it. Your family can come on up here. You guys will take pictures. We'll take pictures for you too. And we'll put this out on social media, so you'll be able to grab it tomorrow sometime.
Alrighty, thank you.
Come on up, guys. Just on their leak. I'll get it here.
We need to scoot this way more.
Yeah, I need Russ to, I need everybody.
Condense, condense, condense. We have three words fall off the.
Alright. Good job, everybody. Thank you.
Before you walk away. This is yours.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, I think that caused much trouble today.
His first swearing again.
A ramp.
Just too often.
So before we go any further, so appointing our new police chief that we have, and the quality of, of a chief he is, and the quality of people he's bringing in, shows his dedication to our township and to his people. And I'm very appreciative of our chief and what he's doing to uphold and make our township a better and safer place for all of us to live.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir.
All right, reports fiscal officer.
Good evening, everybody. I have a whole bunch of reports for you all to look at tonight and some things that require signatures, so I will just start there. First item for you to review and to sign would be the certifications of checks written since the last meeting and the certification of purchase orders since the last meeting. In the last month, I have actually closed the 2024 fiscal year. So there, after tonight's meeting, there will not be any more 2024 purchase orders that will miraculously appear on the list. So they are best closed. I also have in front of you some of the reports. There is a February receipt report. Did have an interesting receipt for the first time in my experience in four and a half years. We received $734 from something called 36 Trez 310. Took a lot of digging, but I finally figured out, when I Googled the terminology, it could be anything from a refund from the Social Security Administration, which made no sense, to a possible phishing expedition by some sort of spam organization, which really made me very comfortable. But I was able to reach out to the bank who said it does look to be like a US Treasury deposit to your account. And after doing more digging and finally getting ahold of someone at the US Treasury, I was told that that is for EMS transport, which is something we often receive deposits from, but it's specific to the Veterans Association. So I just think it's interesting that in all these years, we've never gotten one that looked like this. I also spoke to a different fiscal officer in a larger township. And she said, oh yeah, we sell our EMS transports through. So you'll notice towards the bottom, the one that says 36 TREAS 310 is actually from the Veterans Association. So I guess we'll be getting money from them now. And I never turned down money. So there you go. So the receipt report for February, our total receipts were $55,644.51 for the month. Also in front of you is a series of management reports. The first one is the revenue summary. And I am back to putting where we are in the year, which is approximately 20% through the year. So the percentages in the far right-hand column on the year-to-date tell you where we are. For example, in the general fund, I had only estimated that we would get approximately $10,000 in interest. And we've already exceeded that in February. So we're at 184% on collections for that. So this will continue to change. I also want to preference the fact that we are still in temporary mode for these, for the purpose of these reports, meaning we're just operating on the first quarter of our budget right now. The other management report in front of you is the fund summary. And again, these are all ending February 28th. Then moving on, there's an appropriation summary as of February 28th. Again, we're 20% through the year on expenditures. Some things we've spent more on, less on. And this fund, going back on the fund summary, the carryover balances really aren't appropriately reflected. So that is something we're going to do here in a few minutes. We're going to, we're going to basically close the temporary budget. We're going to hopefully adopt the permanent budget, the permanent appropriations. And I'll be doing that. And then the reports are going to look very different at the end of, at the first meeting in April. So looking back on what, so we're, we're getting there. Also available for you to review and then to sign is the appropriation supplemental report that shows you all the money that I moved within funds. They are usually, they are always a zero net change. Then moving forward, we have the First Financial Credit Card Attestation for January that you can review and that I need President yet to sign. Then because I was able to close the year, the 2024 fiscal year, I was able to get the bank reconciliations completed and posted for January and then again for February. I will tell you, we have two adjustments for February, which down here in the, in the notation section, you don't usually see anything, but there are two. There's two that allowed to reconcile and balance February. One of the goals that I had when I took office the first time was to get our payroll on an upload so that I wouldn't manually have been putting the data into First Financial bi-weekly. And I was able, finally successful in doing that. So I'm pulling data out of UAN and uploading it to First Financial. And we had two employees where UAN said they had a savings account and it was a checking or vice versa. And because of that, one I was able to catch and correct on the same day, so that was fine. I have one employee that there was an error, but it turned out his bank account had been compromised and didn't, it was a good thing that I didn't. So he, I'm waiting to get his new banking information from him. So there's $372 in that bucket. And then there was a $50 withholding correction that had to be made that has since been corrected. So down here, you'll see $422 is kind of an offsetting adjustment that will disappear after next month because they will both be corrected internally. So just wanted to let you know what that is. So now we're back on track with the bank reconciliations and the closing of the year. If you have any questions about any of that that's coming around for you to look at or to sign, I can move on with items for consideration for legislation. The first item is, we do operate in a temporary mode with our budget that we adopt the previous June. We use that to start our year. And then once I, I'm able to close the year and I have final numbers that carry, what our final carryovers are. And I am, I'm ready to move forward for that for you all this evening. So we're, the first order of business that you will have is to adopt the permanent budget for 2025. And part of this is done by adopting permanent appropriations, which is essentially a way of saying our expenditures for the year. The second item that you'll have for you is because of the carriers coming in and corrections to the funds, we're going to request an amended certificate of estimated resources, which is our revenues to the Butler County Auditor. And I will do that tomorrow with the approval of this resolution. And then moving on, one of the items that we have discussed previously, previously was using the One Ohio opioid settlement money that we have received, using that for the purchase of the, is it the flock cameras?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Chief. Which would be an excellent way to utilize that money. So, and then now that we're in, we have all our carryovers and things, all that money would be available because we have about $30,000 sitting in the One Ohio opioid fund. We anticipate getting anywhere from $5,000 to $7,000 every year as they add new complainants, I guess, to the opioid. We're getting, I think it started out, we were getting $3,200. Now the next year, we got like $5,000. So it's, it's growing. So that'll be a great use of those funds, in my humble opinion. And then obviously, the last piece of legislation for you is to give me the authority to pay the bills, which I do appreciate.
Can I ask you one question on, the money that comes in from the opioid fund that is going to use, does that go into, does that have to go into the police fund or is that?
No, it goes into a, it goes into a separate fund, a designated fund. And it, it's already, it's been existing out there. So when those dollars come in, it goes into that fund. And, and we're limited on how we can, what we can do. We did determine, I think, with Chief Gerhart, found that other locality that is using it for, for what we're going to do. They also use it to like purchase Narcan. And we talked to Chief Johns about, you know, I'm, I'm marking it now as I, I notice EMS bill come in as we pay for Narcan throughout the year. I'm trying to kind of notate how much we're spending on Narcan so that we could potentially do a utility on those and pay some of the, out of the One Ohio. But there is some reporting that goes along. Now that we're spending the money, we have to start reporting it, that what we're spending it on, that's not a big deal.
And they're, they're, they're tight on what we can spend that money on, right?
There are limitations. It's a restrictive fund, let's put it that way. There are restrictions, however, there's not like a document that you can go to that says, here are the things you can, so we have to be very careful. A prosecutor's opinion is always a good thing to have, an Ohio attorney in general opinion if they, if they come up. You know, as we, as we can capture, if, you know, if we, the, the one thing is getting the board to, to basically state with the resolution that this is how we intend to use the money. And then, you know, if we felt like we need to get a prosecutor's opinion. But it does look to be, and, and what Chief Gerhart has provided, this looks like a, almost a no-brainer.
I agree. And then for the, the fire department, have you had the opportunity to collect any? You awarded any of those funds for Narcan or for other?
Used any, honestly, we don't use a lot of Narcan.
Okay.
Depends on, you get from the pharmacy when it expires. Sometimes it's a year, two years.
Okay.
Just depends on.
Chief Gerhart has also talked about potentially putting them in the, in the cruisers. Look, again, we'd have to look at shelf life and somebody would have to be monitoring that and when they expire and rotating stock and all that, so.
The drugs that you have access to are kept in a container or, or a specific area within your department?
Yeah, we have a drug box in the medic unit.
Okay. If, if the police department did that, would they need to have that same type of thing? Is that?
I don't know. You may have to talk to the pharmacy board, because we're regulated by the pharmacy board and how we keep our medications. I'm not sure how that would work on the law enforcement end.
Okay.
Is something, something you can buy over the counter?
I believe it is now.
So it may not be as.
Yeah, something like that. I think it's a deal.
That's all I have for you this evening.
Thank you. Purpose, the 2025 appropriations budget and its whole topic of conversation at the special meeting, Board of November 19, 2024. And as part of the work session on November 20th, 2024, the following resolution approves and establishes expense levels under the 2025 appropriation budget. I need a second. Oh, I got to read it. I'm sorry. Move for the adoption of Resolution 25-0124, making a permanent appropriation of the funds of expenditures during the fiscal year ending in December 31st, 2025. I need a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Rule call.
Trustee McGurran.
Yes.
Trustee Blower.
Yes.
Trustee Young.
Yes, ma'am. Purpose, in order to financially account for the fiscal 2024 carryover balances, revenue funds must be amended to the 2025 fiscal budget. This resolution amends these funds. Move for the adoption of Resolution 2025-015, amending the revenue to the various funds and requesting the amended certificate to establish resources for the Butler County Auditor. I need a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Rule call.
Trustee McGurran.
Yes.
Trustee Blower.
Yes.
Trustee Young.
Yes, ma'am. Purpose, the approval of the use of Ohio opioid statement, I'm sorry, settlement funds for the implementation of the two automatic license plate reading cameras. And for the adoption of Resolution 25-016, afraising the expenditure of the Ohio opioid settlement funds. I need a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Rule call.
Trustee McGurran.
Yes.
Trustee Blower.
Yes.
Trustee Young.
Yes, ma'am. Approval of Pay the Bills, motion for the adoption of Motion Number 25-027 to pay the bills presented through the Fiscal Officer Certification and Purpose Orders. Purchase orders, I'm sorry. Need a second?
Second.
Rule call. Oh, discussion, I'm sorry. Any rule call?
Trustee McGurran.
Yes.
Trustee Blower.
Yes.
Trustee Young.
Yes, ma'am. Administration, please.
Good evening. First, under administration, each trustee received a copy of the absentee ballot for Southwest Regional Water and the bios of those running. If each trustee could indicate their selections and. If each trustee could indicate their selections and turn it into me, I will compile and submit the board's top three vote getters from our board for the Southwest Regional Water District Board. Second, the sidewalk policy, I just wanted to make the board aware, the fiscal officer and I still need to talk about wording regarding special assessments. Should a resident choose to have, be required to have a sidewalk repaired and choose to be assessed for it? So the fiscal officer's been busy with end of the year, beginning of the year tasks. So I just wanted to make the board aware that the need to have a sidewalk policy approved has not been forgotten, just a work in progress. Next, I would like to make the board aware, I'm having difficulties with the marquee outside. This time last year, it did the same thing during the day. If it's sunny, you can't read it. It's not illuminated. It did it for a period of time last year. I reached out to Triangle Sign Company. We weren't really top on their list to get help with that. And then we had a very windy day and it started to work again. So I have my fingers crossed that that won't happen again. That's some very important feats. Deactivating, but it's also not communicating with the software that's installed on my computer. Now fortunately, this time it's frozen with the Welcome to Ross Township. In the past, when I've had difficulties, it continues to scroll, but it will have outdated information on it. So I just wanted to make the board aware that the marquee.
Be rebooted.
It, it's been rebooted multiple times. It might need, it might need.
He was a bigger boot.
Bigger hammer.
That's what I was going to say.
Yes.
So you need a Harley mechanic.
Also, in regards to nuisances, you have a status report in front of you. I have reached out to the land bank now that we have official approval, official authority to demo the burned structure on Robin Avenue. I'm waiting to hear back from the land bank on how to proceed with their financial assistance. And several items for board approval. The first would be we, you've been asked by the Ohio Township Association to approve a resolution and support of issue two, that is renewal of the State Capital Improvement Program. State Issue Two will allow issuance of general obligation bonds of up to two hundred and fifty million per year over ten years to fund grants and loans for local infrastructure improvements across the state of Ohio. Issue Two relies on existing state revenues and does not raise taxes. So the Ohio Township Association has asked that the board approve a resolution and then I would forward it to the Issue Two Campaign Committee, Strong Ohio Communities. The next resolution is to update the agreement that we have with Equitable. Equitable provides a four-fifty-seven-B plan for our employees. We have several employees that utilize this plan. And there have been some recent legislative and IRS regulations that need to be incorporated into the agreement. So the resolution is just updating the agreement for that deferred compensation plan for our employees.
The. And just so you know, that was a topic during, I think, the January Township Association. There was a representative from Equitable who came and spoke. They have typically only provided like a deferred comp program for a lot of fire personnel. And they are trying to expand further into township government, offering the same type of deferred comp like we do with Ohio, Ohio Deferred Comp Plan, but to road administration and police as well. So they're, they're wanting to expand. And they offer more than just deferred comp. They also have financial planning, retirement planning, estate planning. If you partner with them, you get additional benefits. So Equitable is, they're, they're a good company. And they're trying to get more approachable. So, no, that's good. Thank you.
Also, there is a resolution before the board to authorize the nuisance abatement procedure for a property on Blue Jacket Drive. You've been provided a picture. The complainant has indicated that the debris has been there for two months. And finally, there is a motion before the board to approve myself as Ross Township's representative to the O-TARMA pool and the fiscal officer as the alternate, participating in O-TARMA's insurance program. Part of our contract is that we will have a representative. So that's all that administration has this evening, if anyone has any questions.
Considering for legislation, purpose, support the renewal capital improvement program and funds grants and loans for the infrastructure of improvement across the state of Ohio since the approved by Ohio voters in nineteen eighty-seven. Move for the adoption of Resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash zero-one-seven to support the State Issue Two revenue, renewal, I'm sorry, of the State Capital Improvement Program on May sixth, two thousand and twenty-five statewide ballot. I need a second.
Second.
Discussion? Rule call.
Trustee McGurran.
Yes.
Trustee Blower.
Yes.
Trustee Young.
Yes, ma'am. Purpose, to approve the updates of Equitable and governmental four-fifty-seven-b plan. Move for the adoption of Resolution twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-five dash one-zero-one-eight, entering into agreement with the Equitable to improve the update governmental twenty-four-fifty-seven-B plan for the Ross Township employees, authorizing the township administrator to execute the agreement. I need a second.
Second.
Discussion? Rule call.
Trustee McGurran.
Yes.
Trustee Blower.
Yes.
Trustee Young.
Yes, ma'am. Purpose, the township administrator to be approved evidence of the nuisance violations to the exist, exist at property of Blue Jacket Hot Drive. This resolution declares the property be a nuisance and orders to be abatement. Move for the adoption of Resolution twenty-two thousand and twenty-five dash zero-one-nine, declaring nuisance for the accumulated debris on thirteen-seventy-one Blue Jacket Drive. I need a second.
Second.
Discussion? Rule call.
Trustee McGurran.
Yes.
Trustee Blower.
Yes.
Trustee Young.
Yes, ma'am. Purpose, the appointment of O-TARMA pool representative and an alternate representative. Move for the adoption in two thousand and twenty-five dash zero-two-five. You had appointed township administrator Lori Kyle to act as a representative for the fiscal officer and the fiscal officer Julie Smith, act as an alternative representative of Ross Township pursuant to Article Four of the intergovernmental contract with this Ohio Township Association Risk Management Authority, or in other words, O-TARMA. I need a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Rule call.
Trustee McGurran.
Yes.
Trustee Blower.
Yes.
Trustee Young.
Yes, ma'am. Fire chief.
Good evening. I have several things for you tonight. The first one in front of you is our monthly incident report for February. Did a total of one hundred and thirty-six calls for service, seventy-one EMS and sixty-five fire. On page three of that, you can see the three-year comparison. See, we've been busier and busier every year and it's just trending upwards like everywhere is.
How does your business, use your terminology, coordinate with the addition of citizens? Or as a, if the citizen, is it going up at the same rate as citizens do?
Sometimes more because we're making a lot of mutual aid calls too.
Okay.
And we'll, we'll go a couple of days and have six, seven runs in a day. And then one or two days, we get one run in there.
Yeah.
Never know.
I'm thinking, and, and, you know, we're, we're talking about that in terms of the levy. As we get more people, you get more busy.
Right.
My point.
Monthly inspections for February twenty-twenty-five, Lieutenant Myers completed thirty-five inspections. Thirty-three of them were new inspections and then two re-inspections. He also has fourteen scheduled for this month. Duty engagement. Last week, I spent a morning at Scarlet Oaks with their high school fire program doing a interview workshop where they would send the kids in. And basically, I would talk to them on how, what fire departments look for when they go to the interview process, what to bring, what, what questions to ask and how to present themselves. And it was nice to see this next group of young firefighters coming up. It's almost like a recruitment tool. It's kind of how I was using it. And they'll have a mock interview end of the school year where we'll go in and interview them. And if we see someone that stands out, we can, here's an application. Come see me when you graduate and get certified. So they'll come out of school with their certifications. It was a real eye-opening. They were, they were very well spoken, all of them. I was real, real impressed. Lieutenant Meyer also has handed out twenty-one smoke detectors in February. And there were several calls that we went on for smell smoke in the house or odor investigation that we found they had no smoke detectors. So they were provided with smoke detectors and they were installed before we left. So we knew they're covered, you know, we want to make sure our citizens are safe. The two thousand and twenty-four annual report, I emailed a copy to the board last week. It highlights our department and what we've done the last year, where we're going, goes over the budget, highlights some major incidents we've had, talks about our fire prevention education programs and highlights our personnel, some of their personnel, personal accomplishments. But I like to brag on our people and I think you guys should see what, what good things they're doing too. I'm going to have Kayla put this on our social media this week. I don't think we've ever placed this on social media before for the public to see, but I think it's good for, for them to see what we're doing out there.
They're on the website.
Really? Okay. I have a couple of items for legislation. The first one is adding a policy in our township manual for the amount of hours that our PRN personnel work. Their PRN personnel are as needed. They don't have, they're not assigned a regular rotation like some of the personnel are. They sign up when they're able to work here and there. We've never really enforced a minimum amount of hours for them to work. We have some personnel that they'll work a day one month and you won't see them for six or seven months. They're, they're not really helping us out. So we're going to make a requirement twenty-four hours a month, then one weekend shift every other month. The weekends are where we're really struggling. So that's in there for your consideration. And I also have two new part-time firefighter medics to bring to the board. Chris Ferguson, he's a full-time firefighter, paramedic and fire inspector at Fairfield Township. And Matt Metzner, he's a full-time firefighter medic inspector at the City Cincinnati. And he's also a Ross resident. And that's all I have for you tonight.
All right, purpose, to add requirement, required amount of hours of work for PRN positions in the fire department. Move for an adoption of Resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash zero-two-zero, amending the Ross Township summary for personnel policies to hit the section six-two-six dash three dash one, PRN firefighter, paramedic, EMT requirement hours within with the fire department. I need a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Rule call.
Trustee McGurran.
Yes.
Trustee Blower.
Yes.
Trustee Young.
Yes, ma'am. Purpose, to approve the hiring of part-time firefighter and medics, Matthew Metzner and Christopher Ferguson. Move for the adoption of two, Number twenty-five dash zero-two-nine, to approve the hiring of Matthew Metzner and Christopher Ferguson to the position of part-time firefighter and medic at the rate of twenty dollars and seventy-five cents an hour. These employments are subject to completion of the prerequisite employment testing in accordance with the current staffing summary to pay rate resolution. I need a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Rule call.
Trustee McGurran.
Yes.
Trustee Blower.
Yes.
Trustee Young.
Yes, ma'am. Road Department.
Thank you. I only have one thing tonight. I actually have some good news for paving for change. Twenty-twenty-five paving bid, we had an estimate of four hundred and forty-six thousand from the county. The actual bid came back at only three hundred and fifteen. So that's a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars less than what we were anticipating paying.
Well, we're planning to do repairs or something.
For this year, for this year's paving, so. Got some good news on there. I just wanted to let you know that. That's all I have.
Any particular reason that you know of that we, and that's a twenty-five percent?
No, they asked that question, but didn't really get it, you know, a good answer. That, one thing that Butler County does for us and for them is they go get this bid early. Like Jurgensen Barrett, they're the ones bidding it. They don't have really any work lined up for this year, so they're kind of hungry. And they get a better price than when their books are getting full, they'll get more picky and charge more.
You know, which company was?
Jurgensen got it this year.
Okay.
Would the board consider maybe extending some paving? Or just leave it there for?
We'll just use it next year or whatever.
We'll just take it over.
I'd leave that up to them. It's too late to add anyway. Sorry, Julie.
I was going to say, when we're to the point of actually doing the, you know, the contract.
Okay.
Internally, when we do the purchase order, maybe we do it, just go ahead and add like a ten percent contingency to bump that up.
We can do that.
We can do that internally, that it doesn't impact the bid and that way we know we're covered.
All right.
Okay. That's it?
That's it.
Okay. Police Department.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just in, again, we were talking about the Havercamp Foundation. For those in the community, one of the biggest fundraisers they do is the Matt's Five K Pursuit, which is April thirteenth, nine o'clock AM at Spring Grove Cemetery. So I will not be running. I will be walking that if anyone would like to join me. However, one of our police recruits and one of our other officers will be running in that. So families are encouraged. You can pick these up here at the police department. Or if you email me, I will send this to you, registration form that you can mail into the Havercamp Foundation. But it's, it's really neat. It's at Spring Grove Cemetery. All the canines for departments they have ever funded will be down there working, doing traffic, keeping security. It's, it's a large event, great fundraiser for them. So if you want to come out and walk with me, if you want to run past me, that's okay too. I'm good with that. But if you'd like to, just reach out and we'll get you the information. So a couple of things for grant-wise, we received another reimbursement of a thousand dollars for P.O. Max Vonderhore's body, body armor through the Attorney General's Office. So I think year-to-date, it's about fifty-six hundred dollars that we've received from the Attorney General's Office for that grant program. We only matched twenty-five percent for three of our officers to have vests. And we will continue to do that going forward. We haven't used all the funds for twenty-five. I did also recently, after, after we had talked about the opioid settlement funds, I did apply for a grant, the Violent Reduction Grant, that will hopefully pay for the flock cameras also for the year one installation. I've talked to fiscal officer Julie that we could do some type of maintenance thing should we be awarded the grant later this year. But I didn't think that grant was going to come out, but it did. I actually spent time writing it today in my office for two days. So we're going to, we'll still be able to use those funds either way. But if the state will do it, based upon the research that I've done for the violent crimes and data that's in the township, that will be a plus for us. P.O. Stamper and P.O. Stepple have completed FTO training school. So they'll be ready to go when our new recruits hit the streets in June after academy graduation. Next week, I will be gone all week. Lieutenant Rogers and Sergeant Little will be in charge. I have to attend new chief's training. It's required by the state. So it's, it's free, but I'll be up in Dublin for a week getting this. So it's, um, it's free, but I'll be up in Dublin for a week getting this training done as required by Ohio revise code. Stats for the, um, February, um, for the department, been eighteen auto accidents, um, two burglaries, um, eight domestic disputes, seven of those were domestic violence arrests. Um, three drug activity calls, total of five drug arrests for the month. Um, four mental EDP calls, four OBIs, um, since the last meeting. Um, sixteen suspicious person and three TPO violations for a total of two hundred and twenty or two hundred and eighty-six, uh, two hundred and twenty-eight other calls for a total of two hundred and twenty, two hundred and eighty-six. Self-initiated calls, hundred and thirty-seven business checks, um, two hundred and one vacation checks, fifty-seven extra patrols that are requested by our citizens and a hundred and two traffic stops for a total of four hundred ninety-seven. And I, again, I want to thank the board for allowing to explore the opportunity of the canine program and, uh, get the ball rolling with this. It's a, it's really gonna be a game changer for our department. I can't thank, again, the American Legion in Hamilton, the Matt Havercamp Foundation for the generosity and the, and the support and what we desire to do to keep our community safe out here. So that's all I have for the board tonight.
So just make a note on that dog. It is a sniffing dog, not a biting dog. There is a difference. So we don't want a biting dog yet.
Alright, and Chief, thank you for your participation and making that happen.
Thank you, sir.
On behalf of the township.
Thank you, sir.
As a citizen, thank, thank you. Do you have a feel for placement of the flock cameras?
Um, so I think based upon just the amount of traffic flow that we have, um, the first two that we would do would be on, um, Hamilton Cleaves. I would do one of the entrance coming into the city, coming from Hamilton, and then the other one coming from Hamilton County, um, as you come into the township. If we get this violence reduction grant and it pays for two cameras, then my next goal would probably be to put them on twenty-seven coming into the township from Hamilton County, which is a lot of traffic there and coming south out of, um, you know, up by the firehouse as they come into the township. I think those two main thoroughfares will, again, criminals, they're, they're not, they don't always think about stuff. They're gonna take the path of least resistance. So they're gonna take whatever GPS tells them to get. And those are two major routes coming into the township. So I, I think as far as placement of those, if we get the grant approved and I come back to the board, that would be my, my starting point.
So your, your vision is to start and stick with the state routes entering and at this point not beyond that.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Township business, old business, fire department levies? Were you gonna discuss?
Did get response back from the county auditor and so the, the quotes that I had given you on what a five mil, five and quarter, five and a half, so on. Those were all accurate. Um, so we, we just have, you know, discussions about uh, where, what we, what we want. It will be an increase, um, because we'll be capturing new value. And, um, like I said, the, the two existing levies are only generating three point two eight mil, which is a pretty significant, um, cut from the five point seven five. So taking it back up to five point whatever is, it, it would be, um, some additional taxes. But we've, I did, I kind of went over that for you, um, with that handout I had provided you at the last meeting. And I could continue to make that available. I'll have it. So.
Discuss that further tomorrow.
Right.
Uh, with Chief Morrison, Captain Emzy is gonna sit in the meeting too.
Right. We have a, a meeting scheduled to talk about the ten-year forecast and, um, I think hearing from your fire chief personnel what the needs are. Um, and then we, we can parlay that into the board conversation.
Um, as it pertains to that, Chief, you said that we're going to come up, we're going to quickly come to a need for the, um, the units, the units that lift people.
Stretchers.
Stretchers from Stryker. How much are those?
Three of them, I believe it was two hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Yeah. How long do those last?
They're, they will service them for seven to eight years, I believe.
Okay.
Is what Stryker recommends.
How old are the ones you've got?
We have two that are seventeen years old and the newest one is eight years old.
So the newer, the newest one is older than what they will service?
Right.
You need three?
Yes, we have three ambulances.
That in your budget?
Uh, it's not in there right now. I'd just put a, um, AFG grant in for three of them. Waiting to see what happens with all the, the grants.
What, what is that grant? What does that?
This is fire, fires grant.
Okay. Is that through the state or is that a federal?
Federal.
Okay. Chances of that happening in time for when you need them?
I don't know. It's hard, it's hard telling.
What does that money do to your budget?
Well, to find somewhere else to cut from.
I, I also thought of something the other day that, that is kind of germane to the conversation. Administrator Kyle and I talked about this. If you travel back in time, uh, prior to this board, anybody on this board in their current position, capital improvements such as, um, the big fire equipment was always purchased through the general fund. It was in and about twenty eighteen or twenty nineteen when a decision was made that the police and fire both had levies. Therefore, from that point forward, they would purchase their own capital expenditures. I also remember a discussion with the previous chief saying, this would have been great to know because we've been renewing these levies. You know, hadn't known this was gonna be thrust, to kind of thrust upon us, we might have done something differently in the last series of renewals. So that one point one million that our fire department has been existing on since twenty eleven was not initially designed for them to pay for all their big equipment. That is currently the way we operate. So they've absorbed three.
A lot of cost.
Engines, a new medic. They've absorbed these things. So it, it's, it's important to know from a historical perspective that that one point one million was not designed to cover capital improvements. It was just supposed to cover day-to-day operations, personnel. Um, so they, they've done an amazing job, I think, of stretching that one point one million.
They've absorbed that at what?
It was around.
For the three or four units that you just described?
They were, they're anywhere from two fifty to four hundred thousand a piece. I mean, they've ranged in cost.
For the, for what?
Well, the one truck was damaged and then we bought a second one.
Yes, they were, the engines were six hundred seventy-five thousand.
Yeah.
And they're up now to about eight hundred fifty thousand for a new truck.
Starting out.
And waiting three to four years to get one.
Right.
So your point is you've been able to absorb that for, oh, these fourteen years.
Right. Which has given the general fund breathing room. And so just keeping in mind that all these things going. And you know, and the road department was, was basically tasked with paying for the plow truck and they don't have an outside levy. So I mean, they're existing on just the inside millage, which is, is dicey. So these are just historical or industrial knowledge type things that we all need to consider going forward is that one point one million annually has, has covered a lot of ground since two thousand and eleven. Um, and with the expectation of this, this equipment, you know, we have a lot of equipment that is now coming up with an expiration date on it. The replacement of this, it's just, it's getting harder and harder and harder to stretch that one point one. So that's been my.
Did the fire department cover a hundred percent or was it fifty fifty? Because the plow truck was fifty fifty.
The plow truck was fifty fifty. I believe that the fire trucks were a hundred percent.
Did it? Think it was.
So that's just a historic perspective.
Thank you.
So we also let the public know that we don't determine when we get new trucks. The state determines that. You have frontline equipment and you have second line equipment. So first line equipment has to be of a certain age. It doesn't matter about the miles, so much it's the age, because it has to have pump parameters like that. It can, all, all our trucks can drop back to another level and that'd be frontline equipment as they get older. But yeah, like she was saying, we have stretched that money as tight as we can get it. And, uh, and we're trying to, like I said before, be proactive. We gotta start thinking ahead. Um, what, what are we gonna come up with? We, we need this money by law. We have to have this. Uh, and we gotta sell it to the public. Let them understand what we have to do. And that's the hard part right there. Because everybody's on a budget. Everybody's on a budget. So are we. You know, and we have to live within our budget by law. So it makes it tough on us to ask for more, but we have to ask for more. And then hopefully the public, uh, the way they back our fire department, the way they back our police department, they'll agree with us. It's all gonna cost us a little bit more and that's just the way it is. We can't help it. We have to follow what the state law says we have to do. Alright, township owned buildings, long-term planning and next steps. Um, I have not talked to APP lately. Um, as far as our buildings go, if anybody's got any questions in the audience about our buildings, where are we headed with them? What are we gonna do with them? Again, we're trying to think proactive. Knowing that the township's gonna see growth over the next twenty years, we want to start getting ready for that. Uh, that's where the two-year or five-year plan comes in. Um, so our buildings, uh, one down here, like I said, we, we can't add on to it because of the flood plain, but we can change it into something else and that would be a civic center. We have to do something up here with our administration building and this lot, what we're sitting on will not accommodate what we're looking into. So we have to start looking in other plans.
How many, how many buildings does the township own and where are they located and how big are they?
Well, we had the fire department on twenty-seven. We have the road maintenance crew, uh, up there, which used to be also the police department and administration building. We have this building. We have the fire department down here and that's it for buildings.
Did you say the road? The road, did you say the road building?
Okay, okay. So there's something going on with all the buildings. They're, they're being used at this time.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. I know the public ain't supposed to speak here right now.
Go ahead.
But you talked about tearing down this building and doing this and doing that.
We didn't say that.
That's what's on social media.
It was.
Here's, here's the thing.
Don't worry about what that said.
Let me get to my point.
Yeah.
You need a new building for the fire department. You got two dollar stores down here. Now, the old dollar store has got to be hurt. Now, you want a building that's big enough? Now, I don't know if the chief is going, you know, would appreciate that building the way it stands. But it seems to me that if you get ahold of the people that own it and you kind of play, let's make a deal, you know? What are you guys gonna do with this building? You're not getting a business, you know? Would you be interested in selling it?
This building, yes.
No, not this building.
Okay, no.
And the possibility of the township looking into making a purchase of that building and turning it into that firehouse.
First of all, the building can't accommodate a fire truck. Fire trucks, you backing them up, the building's not big enough.
It costs almost more to retrofit what we needed than it would be to build a building. Seriously.
Mm-hmm. So I had people mention, well, why not buy Meadowbrook? You know, they, they got a building back there, it could be so and so forth. We can't put a fire truck, uh, department back there and come up through the subdivision with fire trucks on runs. So that's a scratch. So we're looking into what we gotta look into and looking at what we can do. We're, we're not saying we're gonna do anything yet. We're looking into it, investigating it, see what it's gonna cost us, where we're headed. That's where we're at right now.
Okay.
Alright, wherever, uh, the buildings, okay. Monthly ad for the Venice cornerstone, one eighth of a page, sixty-five hours a month. I thought we addressed this last meeting, but is that, is the board interested in that?
Time to consider it.
So we use it for a sounding box, basically of where we're headed, what we're doing. It's not much of a, a cost, one eighth of a page. I guess it can get a lot in there.
Uh, a request for a public notice of the dates and times for the regular meetings and the work.
You gotta get in like the third week of the month prior.
That I got was with the board went to buy an ad for each month.
But just, just be related to township business and that's it. Board discussion? Wonder?
Just wanted to revisit it. What you got? Um, I'm not a, I know it's not a lot of money, but I'm not a big fan of paying for that. Um, I don't, of, of the people who are here, does everybody read the Venice cornerstone?
I do.
Okay. Once in a while, one doesn't? Once in a while?
When they get pictures of me.
Jerry does. You guys do?
All the time.
You, you do?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, so fifty fifty. Do you feel it would be a good thing to put township notices in the cornerstone?
Yeah.
An eighth of a page is not a lot of room to put.
Mm-hmm.
I do, because just like you're telling the people, anything we do with the police, we're telling the people. They cannot, they can come in here and sit here just like I. Otherwise, tell them no. You don't have a problem there. Somebody, well, I didn't know about that. Stop, pick up, pick.
What, what's the cost to put the same notice in the journal?
A public notice, I asked them to consider running it. There's no fee for a public notice, but it's up to the journal whether they run it or not. Most times they run it. I tried to submit it in enough time that if there's, you know, they, if they're looking for content, they can use that.
Yeah, I, I, to, 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 uh, to basically come back and say, if you want to have your public information dispersed to the public, you need to pay us some money. I mean, I, I see what they're trying to do. I mean, you know, but it sounds a little anti-community. I might be wrong.
I think it.
I, I was a negative at the last meeting and I'm a negative at this meeting also, didn't spend that money. We got pay for the internet, numerous Facebook pages, fire department, police department. We add, add that. Um, journal was just brought up. I know when I used to leave the township at four o'clock in the morning, the journal news drops off like six papers at BP. So that would definitely not be the route to go. So you just don't sell them anymore. It, it's the information highway on, on the old internet. So no, I, I would be in disagreement for that, for the cornerstone. I do love it.
Well, he just mentioned the internet and April is big time internet person. But my thinking is, is if you could, the way you explained things in here this evening, if you could sit down and do a video of that, seriously.
Just post this.
Just did.
Yeah.
And, and then post that on, online. There's a lot of people gonna see that.
True.
You know, and, and you could even throw it into Ross Talks and Ross Talks Back and all of them. Of course, there you're gonna catch a whole lot of crap.
Yeah.
But you're getting the information out and you're getting the truth out. Not what, you know, some, well, I heard this and they heard that, you know? You're the person that can explain it between you and you and you. The three of you together, sit down and put this thing together and, and show the people what.
We do have to be kind of careful because there's a fine line between presenting township information and campaigning for a levy. We're not allowed to campaign for a levy. I can, on my own personal time, I can assist the levy committee. But as the township fiscal officer, I'm not allowed to say, please vote for this levy. All I can say is, here are our expenses. Here's our revenue. Do the math, you know, our expenses are here, our revenue's here. All I can do is, is make an, an argument that, that it's needed, but I can't ask them to.
If you write it up to where a, a beat-up old man can read it? No.
Okay.
Alright, we're, we're in an interesting, uh, place with society. A lot of people are on the internet. That's all they do. There's still a lot of people that, that like watching or reading the paper. When I go and, when I go in Subway or whatever, down there, I always grab one of those. I do grab them and I look through them. Um, I just messaged one of. I just messaged one of the people who is the administrator of Ross Talk. And we can share our stuff to Ross Talk and have comments turned off. So it's put on there, it's informational. There can't be this session of back and forth where it's being litigated. And, you know, frankly, I'm reading it going, that's not what this means. And I'm sitting at home going, let me comment. And I hear Julie saying, don't do it, Russ, don't do it. Because, believe me, it's easy, easy there, big daddy. But, you know, to Jerry's point, I do see the the value in it. I just, I mean, I don't know how big of an eighth of a page is for that. I can take this and divide it by eight and say it's pretty small. How much is a quarter page? What if we do it quarterly? We don't have to do it monthly.
Double, it's a little bit less.
What does trustee Blower think about doing it quarterly maybe? You know, I, I don't.
We already put out a newsletter, basically in that fashion, not quarterly, which would be four times a year. But we have a spring and fall, correct? Still going to do that?
Yes.
Yeah. I'd rather stick with that than the cornerstone. And again, how much information could we actually put in there that would be to the public that wouldn't raise a bunch of questions because we weren't able to put it all in there? Basically, for that quarter, maybe it would just be that talk about merging the two fire levies into one. That would still leave, that, that would leave the police department out for that quarter and the road department out for that quarter. So.
Are we allowed to post, are we allowed to send them, even if they charge us when we feel necessary to put something in? Can we just do it at our leisure?
An article?
And, yeah, and have, and pay them accordingly? Okay. All right. We can vote on it if you want.
All right, so I need a second for the vote?
I would make a motion that we do not do pay for a monthly ad. Rather, we pay for the ad as needed when we say it's necessary.
Okay. All right, that's a motion being made. I need a second.
I'll second.
Discussion, roll call.
Trustee McGurran.
Yes.
Trustee Blower.
Yes.
Trustee Young.
I gave it to you. All right, anything from the board then? Being brought up as old business. A new business, Venice mixed use overlay plan district. So what this is, this is involving with our land use and the overlay mix would be from one twenty eight all the way down through here. And what could be done as far as on one twenty eight as far as buildings? So they don't turn any more buildings down and put in little stories that take away from what we have. We want to try to preserve, if I'm not mistaken, some of our heritage. And we would have a say so, what could go in there, what they can be done in. Would that be a great, a good assessment?
Yep. That was originally part of the zoning, when we were talking about zoning back, back in the day, that overlay district was going to be part of that. That has gotten lost since zoning got voted down candidly. I've talked to David Fair to try to educate myself in the, in what that means. Greg Young and John Fisher are huge volumes of information about this, and I haven't had time to talk to Mr. Young. He and I's schedule was just conflicted for the last week. I did talk to Mr. Fisher before I walked in here and he'd like to be part of that discussion too. It has to just be with one of the trustees or else it has to be in full session. There can't be two of us. So I'm perfectly willing to talk to him and I intend to talk to him if it comes to, you know, a meeting, I'm fine too. But I want to understand it, what it means. To Mr. Young's point, it is not to go back into or encroach the areas that are back off of one twenty eight and, you know, the backwards, you know, where Dan, where Dan lives. We don't want it going back that far. We don't want it coming back farther beyond, I guess it would be the west side of one twenty eight, just sort of on the, on the main drag between School Road and one twenty six. So that's where it originally was. I just need to get more information on it and I will. And report back, that's all I can really do. But that, that's what that's about.
Is that like regulating those? The appearance stores on appearance, is and that kind of thing?
And, and, and you mentioned Ross Talk. There was a lot of talk about, about.
I'm not allowed on Ross Talk.
But you're allowed to read it, right? You can read hers.
Read her.
She's been a good girl.
I'm not on Ross Talk, they won't let me on because my profile got spammed and they took it off and I had to make a new profile and they won't let me on.
One of the things that was said is, and this, this is, when Julie, when I hear Julie's voice going, don't you do it, Russ? I know you want to, but don't you do it? Where they say, why did the trustees let there be two of particular kind of store put there? Well, the fact is, we can't stop it, it's own business. We, we can't, once it's own business, you can put in what you want to put in. As long as it meets, as long as it meets, you know, the county's code. If we have a land use plan, I'm not a land use plan, a layover district, we can say how it looks. It has to be so much brick, it has to be so much roof, it has to have this kind of landscaping and things like that. There are places around Cincinnati that have done exactly that. There is a CVS in Montgomery. It doesn't look like a CVS. It looks very nice. They have a land, they have a layover district. An overlay district there. They have that in Westchester between seventy five and kind of coming south down since they're from Westchester.
Level in the same way.
Yeah, so they, they've done that. These are, these are successful in terms of keeping the, if you want to say charm of an area. That's what they're designed to do and that's what they do. However, the people of the area that it will affect will ultimately be the ones who vote. So regardless of what we say, we can suggest it, but that would be something that that would be voted on. And if they vote against it, then it won't happen. So those are the kind of things I'm learning, you know? Again, it'll be up to both of people that it affects, whether they want it or not. And if they don't, and something does get changed or zoned, then there would be no recourse that we have to say, well, there's a family dollar and a Dollar General. And now there's a whatever, whatever the next dollar store is.
There's another.
That we couldn't do anything about it.
Dad likes.
The only, the only thing we can do about it is try to say how it looks, you know? Which is the intent of what we're doing. And we're not trying to do it so that somebody can reside their house or, or something like that. That's got nothing to do with it. So, anyway.
Right. Anything else from the board for new? Announcements, the March twentieth, two thousand twenty five work session will be an incident command system overlay overview for the executives and senior officials. Four hour course hosted by Butler County Emergency Management Association, EMA, at station one oh two on Ross Millville Road. The work session will be open to the public, however, there'll be no public participation. Anything from the board on that?
I've talked to Phil Clayton with that, about that, who is heavily involved. And it sounds like a great opportunity. I encourage everybody to be there if you can. I intend to be there. My daughter in law is due that day and if she brings me a.
Send and put it all home.
If she brings me a third grandchild on that day, then you won't see me. But I tend to be there.
Response is none from the administration, anything from the board?
I have nothing.
Nothing.
Topic on March twentieth, two thousand twenty five work session, the Butler County EMA presentation, Incident Command System Overlay Course. Executive session moves the adoption of a number twenty five dash zero three zero to retire executive session to discuss the employment compensation and public employees accordance, Ohio revised code, one twenty one dash two two G one, time is?
Seven thirty nine.
Need a second?
Second.
And any discussion? Roll call.
Trustee McGurran?
Yes.
Trustee Blower?
Yes.
Trustee Young?
Yes.